That's perfect.
Good morning. We'd like to call the Brookings County Commission meeting July 20th, 2021, to order with the pledge of allegiance. Will you please stand?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Is there anybody that would like to schedule? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item, approval of agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carried. Consent agenda items. Approval of the minutes, approval of travel requests, approval of personal action notices, approval of cellular authorizations, and approval of the human services report. I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any additions, corrections? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Borsma?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Routine business, approval of the claims. Have a motion approved.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Any comments? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Borsma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number B, recognition of employees' anniversaries. I have asked Mr. Krogman to handle this today. The first we have is Heather Murfield, five years in June.
All right. Certificate of appreciation is presented to Heather Murfield on this 20th day of July 2021 by the Brookings County Commission in recognition for five years of dedicated exceptional service in the Brookings County Sheriff's Office. Congratulations. All right, next. Certificate of appreciation is presented to Tanya Thornton on this 20th day of July 2021 by the Brookings County Commission in recognition for 10 years of dedicated exceptional service in the Brookings County Sheriff's Office. Congratulations.
Okay, moving on to item number C, department head reports. Ryan's out. Lori, do you have?
Okay. We have the alcohol beverage license ordinance that you'll have later in the meeting. Jenna and I attended a road district election up on Oakwood Shoreline Drive on July 13th. The turnout was really good, we thought, and the road district did fail by a majority vote. So it was a fun, learning morning for us. I am submitting a report for your pleasure on the Boys and Girls Club. You're not going to get it, however, until the next meeting. They did submit more bills, January, February, March, and April bills. So a copy of those bills and their payment. This is on a grant that is between the Boys and Girls Club in the state of South Dakota Corrections Council for Juvenile Services that we are moderator on. Still no word from legislative audits. I'm really getting to the point of beyond frustration, and I'm asking, how far do you want me? Do you want me to push for, are you going to come finish this audit sometime? Or are you willing to just let it go until they show up? I know their schedule is busy, but I'm getting the same answer every time I check that it's done. It's just the final paperwork has to get put in order.
Has to be put in order to give us our report, correct?
And close it out.
Lori, can you turn your mic?
We've done everything that we're supposed to do, and they've completed everything here, and we're just waiting for their written report.
Just still waiting, and we've been waiting since March.
And I would imagine, but I don't know, that they have a deadline, statutory deadline for getting those out. Does anybody know the answer to that?
I'm not exactly sure. They left our audit to get some state audits done that they had deadlines on. I know they are short-staffed. I know they have trouble with, like everybody, keeping help right now. And I've tried to give them grace on it, but I just don't know how far are we willing to do that? Do you want me to push harder, or do you want me to just let it ride?
Do we publish that?
We do publish it. Did we publish that? It has not been. That's, that's the issue, because statutorily, we were required to publish something by the end of March, I believe. And we didn't get what we needed from audit to publish in a timely fashion for what we needed to publish. That's the issue, I think. I think we need to get something in writing, maybe from Russ Olson, who is the Auditor General, saying that we can, you know, we've waived, we've waived your requirement to publish this. Under the statute, you do have that. I would get something in writing from Russ. Okay. Saying that this is their fault, not ours, basically. Because, yeah, we didn't, that should have been done back in March, but if we don't have what we need from them, we can't publish what we need to publish. Okay, I'll get on that. Myself and other auditors in the state are still waiting for some directive as to the report that is due coming up on the American Rescue Plan Act money. No news of how to do that yet, but we are still tracking those funds. They are in a separate general ledger line for our purposes and a separate bank account, just so we can follow that interest, and everything will be cleaner when we have to return any funds not spent. Rural access infrastructure grant money we received. Otherwise, overall, we've just been busy with regular day-to-day stuff in the office.
Just going back to our audit.
Mm-hmm.
I think, Lori, that when you have your next contact, that should be written, not a call, with Russ Olson.
Yep.
That should be in a letter form.
Yep, I'll get that.
So we've got documentation.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Morning. Seven nine, we opened the Bruce Bridge. A couple of outlying things we have yet to take care of are the seating, which has a window that opens up August 1st. And then, once that seating's done, the county's gonna replace the fence out there, and we'll be done. So that was nice and quick on that one. Seven thirteen, we did an asphalt patch up on Brookings County 29 where we replaced a culvert. Yesterday, we started paving down here on 26, or County Road 26 or 32nd Street South, between 22nd Ave and Main Ave. They actually started over on 34th Avenue, but trying to keep the closures to daytime only while the paving operations are taking place. I know this came out on May 28th here, but we did not get a contractor through the state bid to do our striping. So I reached out to Traffic Solutions, Inc. out of Sioux Falls. Dakota Traffic Services out of Sioux Falls was working on doing the striping on our micro-surfacing, and they indicated to me that they didn't have paint, and that's basically what it says in that letter from, that was in the Kellaland News. And we didn't find out about it as far as the Aberdeen region until later on, but I was lucky enough, it popped up on my phone, and I found this. That was posted on May, May 28th, so I did find one contractor that could provide striping, because if you read later on in that letter, they're saying they're gonna open it up a second time, and they're talking on the 20th, or 28th of July, but that work might not be done until next year. So I guess I don't feel comfortable, especially on some of these paving jobs and these chip seal jobs, to leave them sit without stripes over the winter.
Should at least get center line.
Yep. So this quote that I have here would be with the county buying the majority of the paint from Diamond Vogel Paint. The contractor that I did find, the reason he had paint is he's doing some major airport projects, but they aren't ready, so he's got the paint available, or these other contractors said that, flat out, they don't have enough paint to finish their jobs that they have currently in contract with. So.
How does this quote compare to what we normally pay?
It's right around this area. We usually expend about $60,000 to $70,000 a year on paint, but that would include retrace of our roads. This would just be to do our chip seal routes. This would be fog line and center line.
Is there any possibility the state would participate?
That's been another question that we're working through the state with, but I haven't gotten an answer yet, and neither have other county highway superintendents, because they're, we're all sitting in the same boat, because we rely on, on that, and then now it's not available.
Is this something we need to move fast on before?
I, I believe so, or we're gonna miss out on not getting the paint. That's the problem, is Texas froze. That's where the facilities we're at that stored the paint ruined the paint.
Yeah, there's apparently a nationwide paint shortage right now in all types of paint, including your striping paint. So it's not just this type of paint, it's all paint.
Right, but I, I think it's something that, I, I think we should move forward on, or we're not gonna have stripes. Okay, move forward. Sounds good. Other than that, we've been laying a lot of gravel down. Been working on County Road 27, north and south of 14, so the crew's been staying busy with that. I guess the only other update I got is the box culvert we're planning on doing north of Volga. We'd like to start that, be September 13th timeframe. That's the soonest I can get a crane lined up. And I've called around to several outfits that provide that service, so. All right.
Bob?
Good morning. We had our communications. July 7th to 13th, I was in Prince George's County for the NACO convention, and one thing that I found out through some networking is communication issues that deal with ambulance services can possibly be covered under that American Rescue Act funding because of the COVID being medically related. So, and we'll talk about that in just a second on ours. The PPCC pod meeting was held on September 9th. It was held in July. The next meeting will be September 9th. They decided not to meet in August, and that's subject to change, of course, with the, with the way the variants starting to move. We'll, we'll see if, if there's gonna be any change on that. If there is a change on that, we're immediately informed to commission, obviously. The radio club had their ID cards made. We're producing those for them once again. One thing that we will have to bring up in the, in January is I've got a couple of radio club members under the age of 18, so I'll work with the commission director to see how we're gonna cover those under the workman's comp. On the 15th, I went down to Sioux Falls Two Way Radio discussing, to discuss that county fire reception problem with our, with our county repeater. After discussing, after spending a couple hours with them down there, they recommended that tomorrow, they're coming up to put a repeater in Volga for, I mean, in Elkton. That, that has had radio problems for a while, and we submitted that, that repeater in December. They're just now getting all the parts for it, so they're gonna come and install that. They seem to think that that will take care of the Aurora radio problems from Brookings all the way over to the state line. The Aurora, the Elkton repeater should take care of that. And they're actually recommending that our existing county repeater, now the one that's, that's getting massive interference, it's 20 years old. It's gotta be, the lifespan's about 20 years, so soon we're gonna end up replacing the repeater, no matter what. But they're recommending that remove that repeater from the South Water Tower over to the city of Volga and install it on, on their water tower in Volga. And I got a quote on that, and the quote is right at $20,800 plus or minus. And after looking at them, the Volga area, the way it sets in the floodplain and all that, we've got repeaters in Sinai, we've got repeaters in Bruce. It's believed if we put one in Volga, that that will take care of, we've already had communication problems from the city limits of Volga out west, and this should take care of that all the way to the county line, if we, if we get the permission. What I can do is put it on the agenda, if, if you're conducive to it, I'll go ahead and have it put on the agenda for the next meeting, and we can have the discussion as an action item. I realize it's not an action item right now, but I wanted to get it to you to start thinking that away, if at all possible, because I, by, by the next meeting, we'll go ahead and we'll have our antenna working in Elkton, and we'll be able to verify that the Aurora one's fixed. Because we don't wanna fix only one. We wanna, we wanna have good communications countywide, and this is just about ready to complete, to completing that.
If, if one's installed in Volga, how about the one on the south Blue Water Tower? Would that be eliminated, or?
That, what that would be is probably, what they, what Sioux Falls Two Way recommended is we shut it off, keep it in reserve in case, God forbid, we have a tornado and one of the surrounding ones, then they could come and pull that repeater on a temporary basis and put it up there until we can get a new one in.
I got a little confused, Bob. You're saying we'd put a new repeater in Volga and not move the one that we got? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
Leave the one that, that there's now, but shut it off. It's a 20-year-old repeater. It's gonna go bad sooner or later, but we can keep it there in reserve. It's not hurting anything. If we took it down off the Blue Water Tower, and we tried to store it in the basement, or we tried to store it in the highway shop, what you're gonna do is damage it, and it would never be usable. So they're, they're recommending to shut it off, keep it on the Blue Water Tower, and move it when we have to move it.
So do we have another repeater that's west of Volga, or will that Volga one serve all the southwest part of the county then?
We have no repeater in Volga. Our, our main repeater's on the Blue Water Tower. What they would do is, that license would just simply move from the Blue Water Tower over to Volga, which is legal under Federal Communications Commission regulation. So it's not actually requesting a new repeater, it's just transferring the one from here over to.
But it'll have enough power to service all of the southwest part of the county.
That's what they, that's what they're, they're thinking. Yes, ma'am.
And Volga's okay with installing it?
Well, we're, we're in discussion. We got the fire department talking to the Volga city, city people, and that's how it worked in Elkton. Like, you typically contact the fire department. Since it's an internal, we let them, let them work it, and then Volga's fixing to get a new city manager pretty soon. I'll have to go talk, talk to him, and then, of course, they got a public works director that would all, also have to be contacted. Yeah, we wanna fully do it with their understanding, and obviously, if they don't want it, you know, the communications, if, if they don't want the tower in Volga on their water tower, then we'll keep trying to troubleshoot what we got, and, but, but what it's doing is, every time they come up, it's $1,200 just to try another, another thing. It's only gonna take a couple visits, and we'll end up with the price of a new repeater. And a drainage update, the National Conservation Resource Service asked about jurisdiction, who actually had jurisdiction to even think about plugging that, that hole in the Big Sioux River, and I worked with our legal counsel, and we replied to them. The Brookings County Drainage Commission has the authority. We sent that to them. Drought letter, we received a drought letter from Department of Agriculture. Obviously, it's drought. The drought will be declared at the state level, and then any counties that fall within that designation will be covered under the drought designation. In years past, we used to have to do our own drought regulate, declaration. As of now, they are not asking us to do that. What, what they're saying is, we'll be covered under the statewide drought declaration at this time. If that changes, obviously, we'll come back to you. And I believe that's all I got. Any questions? Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
Real quick update here. We got our protocol. Ag land valuation. The top dollar, which you remember is the value of a perfect acre of either crop or non-crop soil. Top dollar for crops stayed the same this year, as it was for 2021's assessment, at $3,621.23. The non-crop top dollar went up 2%. It was $21.66.58 per acre a year ago. For 2022's assessments, it's gonna be at $2,210.97 per acre. If we apply these numbers, which we already have, that gives us, for Brookings County, a total county average per acre valuation of $2,252.10. 77% of the soils in Brookings County are rated for crop. Just for your information. Any questions on that?
Are you still figuring that that might be around 50% or a little less of fair market value?
Yeah, from what we've seen on our market transactions, we're between 40 and 50% on most things. If there's easements involved, we might be closer to, you know, 70, 80%, but just your, generally speaking, ag land sales, we're in that 40 to 50 range.
You said, you said average crop for the whole is 22, just like it's almost as close to pasture.
That's the average ag land valuation countywide. That's your crop and non-crop together.
But 77% is crops, so wouldn't it be closer to the 3200?
It would be, but you have to figure in that each soil has a rating of less than 100, too. There's only a couple soils that are 100-rated. Otherwise, the crop soils range anywhere from like 52% up to 100.
Crop soils not, not fantastic in our county compared to?
Uh, there's a few that are, but there's some marginal crop soils as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Dustin?
Morning.
Morning.
Start with attendance. Eight through the gun range, 33 through the archery range. Our events, we had a private event on July 8th. 4H has been very busy. They've used the facility nine times since July 6th, either in the classroom or the archery range. July 11th, we had another enhanced concealed carry class, and then the Midwest maidens practiced twice. I'm working with the PRC, the board, asking members, we're thinking about changing the hours of the place for, for the public. Looking at Tuesday to Thursday, 3 to 8, Friday and Saturday, 1 to 8, and then Sunday, noon to 5. We don't see a lot of traffic from 8 to 9 at night, so this would eliminate paying somebody to sit there for an hour and accommodate some more of maybe retired or people that work nights. They can come into the range at 3. We've been getting a lot of positive feedback. We got a board meeting on Monday that I'm gonna bring it to them and see what everybody thinks, but I've emailed members and public and everybody, just trying to get the word out. Train perform routine maintenance for the second quarter. They found a bad compressor in the archery range, so they're getting me a quote on that. I did go down and tour archery addiction, which is a archery range down in Renner, and then the Alliance in Sioux Falls. Asked them some questions. They're actually, the Alliance is coming down to tour our facility this Friday, so see if we can't work with them. A while back, we were working with 4H to, to get a grant for some new targets. We did not receive that, so we'll try again next year, but that's all I had. You guys have any questions for me? Thank you.
Thank you. We have four minutes.
Good morning. It's in jail at the present time. 24/7 is, we got 74 participants in the 24/7 program. 30 come in twice a day, so it's.
And Tanya, that got her certificate today, she's in charge of the 24/7 program and so forth, and I wasn't for sure who was, if there was, if we had a responsibility on the DUI for costs, and they said that it's coming, they have to PBT and P tests, and, but the court system is paying, paying for those. With Hope and Drug Court, random UAs, they don't, so just to kind of clarify that. It's been busy the last two weeks, especially this last weekend, kept the state's attorney's office busy, Ben's did a great job with us getting warrants, and we're shoving stuff over to him this morning with some things, too. White had their celebration with no issues midway. Between Brookings and Volga, had a motorcycle get-together over the weekend that didn't create any issues for us. We had that kidnapping that came out of Oakwood, a lot of good work between my deputies and dispatch at the police department, and pinging the number and getting the victim found, that was our main concern, is getting the victim found to make sure she was okay. We have one person in custody right now, and state's attorney be issuing a warrant for the other person here this morning, probably. The White arrests, just a lot of good work between my department and Lincoln County, Minnesota, getting that wrapped up. The other thing is, as quickly as I give you this form, and we did a speed analysis at South Lake Drive in Lake Ponce, between June 21st and July 8th, and just quickly, lane one is kind of, where we did this at 455th Avenue, it's kind of a curve there, so it's kind of, it's kind of, lane one is a north, kind of a northwest, and lane two is southwest, but during that period, 19,323 cars went through that area, and that, of course, that's over the 4th of July and so forth, and you can tell that actually, yeah, there are some ones that are, that speed through that, but 85% of the vehicles are going by, going 38 miles an hour, so it shows that 85 percentile of the traffic up there is obeying the speed limit. But I am concerned about the ones that are in the higher, we're trying to do as best we can up there. On the second page, it kind of gives us an analysis of when the best times to run speed on, during that. Now, there is a little bit, Brian, I don't know how many days they did road construction up there, was it more than two? Yeah, so there's a little, that probably brought down some of that traffic speed, because they did have a pilot car, I believe, up there during that time, too, so. Anyway, that's kind of a, in a nutshell. Do you have any questions?
35 miles an hour too fast for that resident, that's pretty residential there, is it too fast for that?
Well, I, you know, I, I don't know. It's, the road can handle the 35, I don't know if Brian's got any, you know, the problem is, you can put it at any speed, you gotta go with the violators, you know, if, you know, you look for them not to speed, but it doesn't matter what speed limit you got, you're always gonna have the speed limit up there. But as far as accidents and incidences, you know, I can't, you know, if I had a bunch of accidents up there that I could report, I would say, but we don't have any, I don't have any stats to indicate that we should bring that speed limit down. Well, we'll do another analysis, and then Brian says he's got, he's putting his counter up, or is it up now? Yeah, I pulled mine off to put it, but we're gonna put it up there to, again, you know, but 4th of July, of course, brings in a lot of traffic, so, but, and we wrote, we've wrote a lot of tickets up there, too, so. Just one quick thing, and I brought it to Larry's attention, that I have an ongoing dispute between two landowners up in the area, 468th Avenue and 198th Street, and I can't make either one happy, so they're mad at each other and mad at my office. Right now, there's an irrigation system that's going over the road, and one property owner is upset because he doesn't feel he can travel down that road because of the irrigation system. We're in the process of getting that moved to try to get it turned off, and we did submit paperwork to the state's attorney, because you can't, there's a state law that says you can't have irrigation system go over a road. It's just a mess up there. I feel at some point, they may contact one of you, being dissatisfied with my office on how we're handling things, but some of this, a lot of these things that they're wanting are civil issues between the two, and then whatever we can pick out of a criminal, you know, we'll let the state's attorney's office handle that, but we're trying to keep both parties happy, but we're not succeeding, so just, if you do get a call, or whatever, and then I can fill you in more, just to make you aware in case you get something, so.
Marty, quick question. When you put your tester up there, I guess, does it show the speed to the...
This is a, it's a stealth, we hide it on a pole.
Okay.
But we've had the, we put the speed trailer up there, too.
Right, and I'm just, it seems like when you see the speed trailer, people see it, and they tend to slow down, and I see in towns a lot, they're putting, you're going too fast, like when you go into Aurora there, they changed it, I mean, would that be worth something that's up on top of the hill, when they're coming down from the west on the east there, that kind of gets some momentum going? Could we have something flashing with the speed limit saying, you're going too fast?
And I think that's what we'll do, is put two up. The Highway Safety Grant, I have two, I'm gonna buy two in October, but they were gonna go over in the Volga area, in the area of the swimming pool on that, on the county road, that, but I think I'll pull them and put them up there.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, to LeAnn's point, I guess, is, there's a lot of driveways coming out, and I think there's a lot of people that walk on the shoulders there for exercise and whatever, and it's maybe a unique situation that, where we're at, and I don't disagree that 35 is still fine, but maybe we need to have a little extra reminder there that says they're going too fast, that they may turn around and say, off the gas pedal and keep it under 40.
And actually, I think those work, they do, and you know, there may be some that don't pay attention to them, but I hear more and more that how they do see that flashing at them and slow down, so, I agree, so that's the intention, is that I'm gonna, I'm working with Highway Safety, because when we wrote with, we wrote the grant, we wrote it for over at Volga, but I talked to Dennis Falcon, who was in charge of that, and then my retired deputy, John Pike, so I got a little pull, and we're gonna, he didn't see any problem, we'll pull those two and put them up, put them up there, but we've had the big, our speed trailer up there, too.
Okay.
So, but this is a stealth, this is a stealth.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Scheduled agenda item, we do have a 9 o'clock, it's an action approve agreement number 21-85, an application for occupancy of the right-of-way of county highways made by the city of Volga, do I have motion approve?
So move.
Second.
Motion second, any comments?
The engineer and the city.
I believe, yeah, this new city administrator from Volga is here to discuss that, if you have any questions.
Any questions, or you want to come forward and introduce yourself?
I appreciate your action on the item.
To pull up another chair.
But are there any questions?
Can you introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Scott Letty with Banner Associates. Michael Schulte, city administrator for the city of Volga.
Okay. Into the industrial park there?
Correct, yeah, there's a water main that's stubbed out off of Highway 14, and it'll just get extended to the north. The work is in the road ditch, it looks like the application was for shoulder closure, but after talking with Winter Construction, their preference is to close the road, just for safety reasons. The dirt that they take out to put the water main in, they want to put on the shoulder, so. It may be different, I didn't do the application, but now that you bring it up there, it shows a closure. I think Pat might have talked to Brian about it, about doing the closure. It would just be, they're thinking more than likely just two days, and it would be open, they would open it back at night.
So this is just on some area of the corner there?
Correct.
Right. What's your timeframe?
They'd actually like to start this week. Yeah, they're wrapping up with most of their other work out there. This was on, I think, your last agenda, but something came up that it didn't get put on the agenda, so I know it's now become short notice, but...
Any other questions? Hearing none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Moving on to regular business. Action approve.
Can we back up?
Just one second, I'm sorry.
Two, two things, just to note that the community health report was submitted as part of the packet. They had said that they wouldn't be able to be here, but they submitted their, kind of, they do that biannually, I think, submit their report, and then we have the be-it-noted items with the finance officer's report, auditor's account with the treasurer, payroll and additive totals, highway expenditure report, and the register of deeds statement of fees collected.
And also, Misty reported that they're out spraying shoulders of county roads, and also that Sonia reported that there, she was out at the state 48 show, so, have those added. Okay, moving on to regular business. Action approve resolution number 21-28, a plat of Block 1 of Sapanen Edition located in the south half of the northwest quarter and the north half of the southwest quarter of Section 10, Township 112 North, Range 50 West of the 5th Primaridian, Brookings County, South Dakota, have motion approve.
So move.
Second.
Have motion a second, any comments?
We heard this on the September 6th, regular scheduled planning meeting passed unanimously with the recommendation that this board approves it.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, action approve resolution number 21-29, a plat of Kirby Pioneer Cemetery Edition being located in the southwest, one acre of the southwest quarter of Section 24, Township 110 North, Range 51 West of the 5th Primaridian, Brookings County, South Dakota, have motion approve.
So moved.
Second.
Have motion a second.
We heard this one on September 6th, it follows state law on plating cemeteries, and it was passed and sent to this board with the recommendation that you approve it.
Any questions? Hearing none, call the roll.
Forsma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Action approve resolution number 21-30, a bridge improvement grant program resolution authorizing submission of applications for structure numbers 06-190-041, 06-210-198, and 06-280-139, do I have motion approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Have motion a second, comments? Brian is out right now, but I think it's pretty self-explanatory.
So, but we're doing 20% match?
Yes.
Okay, and so, these are to replace the bridges?
This is a improvement grant, I'm not sure if it's...
It shouldn't be replacement, I don't think, on a bridge improvement grant.
I don't know if it's rehab or not. Let me see, five...
Because it seems like if we were replacing bridges, we've usually upped our match to try to get...
I don't think these are replacement, I think these are maybe preliminary engineering grants. That's why they're being handled three on that same application, usually if it's a major rehab or a replacement, it's its own resolution.
I'm guessing these are engineering grants.
And I, along with Commissioner Krogman's remarks, I thought we were doing more than a 20%, so we had a bigger...
That's on replacement.
We do those on, when we're doing like big replacement or rehabilit, rehab projects, usually on the preliminary engineering grants, we just do the 80, we do our 20% match, and have been fairly successful at getting those at that.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item D, action approve resolution number 21-31, a resolution authorizing the purchase of office furniture and equipment needed to furnish the Brookings County Detention Center expansion or remodel project based upon the price established through the state of South Dakota Bureau of Administration Procurement Management bid process, have motion approve.
Move approval.
Second.
Have motion a second, any comments?
So Bart is getting ready to start making some purchases for the jail expansion, and instead of us trying to bid all of these individual items, we're gonna go through the bids that the Office of Procurement out at the state has already done with a lot of these vendors. You'll be seeing some items come through the minutes, because there's some stipulations that, of information that we have to put in our minutes when we do buy off of this process, so you'll see that as we move forward, but the first step was passing this resolution into, giving, so that the board is basically indicating that that's going to be our process.
Call the roll, please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E, action approve resolution number 21-32, a resolution requesting the Department of Revenue exclude fingerprinting fees from the sales tax, have motion approve.
So move.
Second.
Have motion a second, comments?
Where did the resolution come out of? I really like this.
So I drafted this resolution from our previous conversation. This resolution, in the way it's drafted, will now be sent on to our state association. That exec board will review this and determine whether or not to send that on to our full state association vote in September, then if it passes at the state level, our association will carry this to the legislature as part of, part of that process during the next session. So this needs to get to our state association by the end of this month, that's why it's here, that's why we didn't have time to take it to our Sioux Valley Commission District, because we don't meet until August, and the deadline for this is here at the end of this month, so I wanted to get this. It does say that an individual county can pass a resolution and send that on to the exec board at our association, so.
Marty, are you taking that to the Sheriff's Association, too?
Yeah, I think...
Is, and once we pass, I assume we're going to do that today, is this something, Stacy, that you could maybe share with our legislators, so that they know that this is coming?
Yes, I can do that.
Also, I suppose our 10-county meeting would probably be something.
Yeah, we could bring, I think, yeah, if, a little later in the meeting, we'll be discussing who's going to that, I think we could take that there as well, so that we can get our exec board representative, who is essentially the resolutions committee member, up to speed on what this ask is, if they have questions.
No further comments, call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Forsma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Backing up, the item C, Brian, on a bridge improvement grant program, was that resolution for a engineering?
Yeah, prelim.
Prelim engineering? Okay, thank you.
Nothing to go.
Item F, action approve agreement number 21-86, an amendment number one to agreement number 19-38, a state of South Dakota Department of Transportation funding agreement, have motion approve.
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Have motion a second, any comments? Hearing none, call the roll.
Forsma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item G, action approved agreement number twenty-one dash eighty-seven, Brookings County, thirty-fourth Avenue, or four seventy-third Avenue, line relocation, utility relocation agreement, contribution in aid of construction, Sioux Valley Southwest Electric Co-op Incorporated, have motion approve.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion a second, any comments?
So when, when are they going to start, they want to work on this soon, right? Okay, if, if the project, you know, doesn't go. We're still, I mean, they want to do it now because they're relocating some other stuff too?
I don't believe so, I think they, they're doing this because of the interchange project.
It's my understanding this agreement needed to be in place to keep moving forward?
For the project?
For the project.
I just didn't.
I'm not sure on when this would actually take place. Brian, I haven't really indicated.
I haven't heard nothing from them. They've, they're working south of there currently, but that's for line maintenance, so I, I'm not sure when they would plan on doing this.
Well, I was just, you know, concerned, I don't, you know, we don't know obviously if the project, they're going through processes with landowners of that possibly enema and name, and I don't know how long that process would take. That takes, you know, years or months to, to go through there, and I'm not sure if they've granted the opportunity to continue through the process. We move them and it doesn't go, we're out the money, and it's not a terrible amount of money or anything, but I mean, does anybody know where we're at on it?
I think this is basically contingent on the project moving forward, because where the poles will be relocated, we'll be purchasing right away there to move the poles. They just wanted this agreement in place, but.
If we agree to it, that's fine, I just.
I, I agree with you a hundred, I agree a hundred percent, if we sign this, they're going to go out and move them tomorrow, I, I'm not sure on that.
Right.
Just a question on whether or not, is this, it's thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars, is this included on our two million dollar amount of money that we said we contribute to the project, so this is a an additional cost or expense to us, it's not included in that?
When we redid thirty-fourth, we had signed an agreement with Sioux Valley at that time for them to have their poles there, because of that, this now falls on kind of us, because we had already previously agreed that they could put their poles where they put them, and now we're asking, because of the interchange project, to have that moved again. So this is, would be a hundred percent county, not a part of the original interchange project cost.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not against it, and I don't have a problem signing this, however, if there's a way to delay the work and expending the funds to make sure that the project
Is going to move forward a hundred percent.
You know, and I don't, and I don't know if that's four or five months, if that's next spring that they could, you know, we could hold off, I, I don't know, I guess that's kind of what my question is.
Is it worth tabling until we can find the answers to those questions?
If we need it to keep moving forward, I don't.
And I could, and I could definitely have that conversation with, you know, I'm working with a couple of different people, someone from Sioux Valley, and then someone that's also on the interchange project as well, and say, you know, we're not against doing this work when, if and when it's needed, but we don't want to do this, and then the project's not moving forward, and now we're out this money, so I, I, I mean, yeah, I think we ta- we could table it till the next meeting, and I can try to get some of those answers. I don't think, I don't think at, at this point Sioux Valley had no intentions of moving those poles, but they're doing that because of this project. I don't know that the project isn't going to move forward in the next two weeks enough to where they have to have the poles moved in the next two weeks, I don't think, so I think to get a few clarification made, we can, we can table this until the next meeting, I'd be comfortable with that, try to get some answers.
Right, and.
Or if there's language that we could put in here, that they would be comfortable with, that says.
Contingent upon.
Contingent upon the project moving forward, and us giving them X many, you know, days of notice to get the work done.
And, and check with Sioux Valley, because maybe they gave us this quote saying they're having crews in the area, and they could just do it while they're here, or if they're giving us the quote saying, we're going to have to, we're going to have to mobilize to get into this area, and actually, it might be okay for them to wait until we get the okay. I, I wouldn't want it to go, well, if you don't do it now, it's another ten grand more.
What this says, though, is that they're estimating it's thirty-one thousand five hundred, but that we agree to pay what the actual costs are at the time of construction, which could be completely different than that.
Correct, it's got twenty-twenty construction season, and.
Yeah, it's got twenty-twenty, though, yeah. Well, twenty-twenty-one.
Have motion to table?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion a second to table. Item G, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, stable. Item H, discussion and action to set a fee for off-sale liquor licenses in accordance with South Dakota codified law thirty-five dash four dash eleven dash one. Discussion.
So as you know, the new off-sale licenses, we just updated our liquor ordinance to reflect that now we have these new off-sale liquor licenses available. Now, the commission needs to set a fee for what you want to charge for those licenses. I think Jenna probably had, Jenna and Lori probably have some additional information.
The original application fee cannot be less than three hundred dollars, renewal fee cannot be more than five hundred dollars.
Can you remind me how many of these licenses we have to give out?
We will have five.
And these are the ones that have to be more than three miles away from a municipality.
It's not really any significant amount of money for us, so it doesn't really make any difference, so I think myself, I think we should set both the initial and the renewal one at four hundred dollars, I'm throwing that out for conversation, and just be done with it, and then it's not confusing.
These are five additional, or five including the ones we have now?
So these would be five new license types for off-sale liquor. So people could go and buy a bottle of liquor and carry it off, right now with the, the retail, you know, we have licenses that allow that for beer sales, but not for liquor sales out in the county, we've never had that until now.
So I guess my question for the finance office folks is, right now, that on-sale liquor license, RL license column in that like two pages from this, what you've got on the screen, Stacy, shows a variety of different fees, and I'm trying to understand how that works.
So the fee for on-sale liquor is based on what the nearest municipality charges for a like license. That's how it's stated in statu- in statute for on-sale liquor, that's why you see prices all over the board, because it's, it's based on what the nearest municipality is charging. The malt beverage, that RB license, that's, that's more clear cut.
And then the, the RW, the other kind of off-sale wine and cider license at five hundred, is that something that we set, or is that something that has been set in statute?
Set in statute.
Marty, do these licenses also have to undergo your, your underage checks? All right, so you're going to add possibly five more of those checks to your annual checkups? You do that twice a year, once, twice a year. It seems to me that if you're looking at the on-off wine and cider licenses, five hundred dollars, that these particular five licenses, to me, should all just be five hundred dollars and five hundred dollar renewal.
Agreed.
Make it consistent with the off, on-off sale wine and cider license.
The only reason I, and I'm not necessarily opposed to that, the only reason I said four hundred for this new one is that everybody looking at, when they see it's a five-hundred, or a four hundred dollar fee, will know it's this new thing, because it's not a fee that we already use for something, and it'll be readily identifiable in our staff's minds and in the public's mind, that that's for this new kind of license. But if you guys want to do, you know, five hundred for everything, I don't have a problem with that, it's just, you would just automatically know when you see that the fee's four hundred, which this is a little confusing now that we're going to have four different types of licenses.
I don't know, I think the spreadsheet is pretty darn helpful, personally. And so I don't, I, I think realistically, for, for me, some level of consistency throughout those license types makes it easy to just have it at five hundred and keep it at five hundred, from a business owner perspective, not having a hyper-inflated first cost is really helpful, because you've got a lot of inflated first costs on startup if you decide to do something like that, and so giving them something that's consistent year over year and budgetable makes it really simple, I think.
Need a motion.
Make a motion to set the fee at five hundred dollars for initial license and five hundred dollars for renewal.
Second.
Have a motion a second, to set the fee at five hundred dollars for off-sale liquor licenses.
When does this come effective, and when can these entities apply for the license?
Anytime now. Yeah, it, it went into effect July, the new statute went into effect July one.
So I guess, as long as discussion, I mean, this doesn't go with fees, but we have multiple, how, how'd they tell us we only get five, the other one, because we have off-sale liquor license of one, two, three, four, or on-sale, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. If all seven decide they want that option, are we just going to take?
You won't be able to. They won't be able to, they had, because some of them are within three miles of a municipality. And, and the number is ba- is set in statute based on population requirements. Yes.
Population outside of municipalities is sixty-five hundred forty-eight people, and it's the, it's one for the first however many, and then an additional license per thousand or something like that.
So we may not have the problem, but I'm just wondering that if we get more than five applicants, if we go one at a time, first come, first served, you're getting them, or do we turn around and say, this is the deadline? Whoever wants them needs to go by this time?
So as part of your liquor ordinance, now that we have these fees established, once this motion passes, what the finance office will do is publish a notice saying that these licenses are now available, and they will, will have to get in applicants, and then these applications, if we have more than five, will get vetted by you as the commission, and you will determine who will get them. Yes, yes. Initially, I think we'll do an initial notice that these licenses are available per our ordinance.
Because there could now be entities that are outside that don't have liquor licenses that would want to start selling off-sale liquor.
Yes, could happen.
So it's not necessarily the people we have here.
Right. Right.
They're probably the most, they're, they're probably equipped.
More than, more than likely, they're the ones that are equipped to do it, but not necessarily a hundred percent be the only ones.
I don't recall exactly in the reading of the bill, but I think it also allowed us to have some discretion on location of the building, even if it's outside three miles, location of the building where it's at, hours of operation, things like that's size of building, facilities, all those things can be taken into consideration as you issue the licenses, so it's not just first come, first served, you, you, you can pick and choose a little bit based on location to disperse it around the county more appropriately if you wanted to. Marty, he's got his hand up over there.
Just to clarify, they only get tested once a year, we go half and half.
Okay.
After the licenses and then. The summer stays, so we want to make sure we get both in. They're, they're only checked once.
So we're adding five of them to you.
Any other questions? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carried. Item I, action approved appointment to the Human Rights Commission to fill an unexpired term that ends December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Have motion approve.
So moved. Second.
Who?
We need to pick one.
Yeah.
Charlie Ward, seconded. Is that what your motion was?
Not necessarily, no.
Oh, okay.
I was thinking we had both, I was thinking we had two spots open, we had one that we couldn't get, and then one that we're here.
We have one, one position with two applicants.
All right, so you have to clarify which one in your motion.
I thought we had one we couldn't fill. What was that? We just had one come out.
That's coming up.
Brookings, is that housing?
Yep, we're going to discuss that shortly here.
That's coming up here.
I, I just thought we just had a, a notice from Michelle the other day about trying to re, trying to.
Yes, that just came in end of last week after this agenda was set, so, yeah, there's, and there's some additional discussion coming up on housing here in, in a couple of agenda items.
Okay, my bad.
So this would be, yes, there's one position on the Human Rights Commission, the county's appointment to that city, to that city board, and there's two applicants.
Entertain a motion for either candidate.
Make a motion for Charlie Ward.
Second.
Have a motion for Charlie Ward, and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Charlie Ward is the new Human Rights Commission. Item J, work plan update.
That is in your packet, and the changes are noted in red. We can update the Bruce Bridge now that it's open, so it's probably just some finish work to do up there. The Signei Bridge, that project has been bid, so that continues to move forward. The five-year plan for highway, you did see the draft of that during budget hearing. Raising that and having that hearing in September, that public hearing to approve that five-year plan. For townships, we do have, the Monday, August ninth, we have scheduled for the township meeting out at the BCOAC to discuss a, a number of different things, but probably the biggest being the state's culvert inventory project. Our grant project, we have had a township now, right at the end of last week, submit an application to get reimbursed for culverts, although we don't officially have any information out there, we didn't, we didn't send everybody a new application for culvert replacements here in twenty-one, we did have a township submit an application, so we'll have to take a look at that and discuss that, and I can, and I can see that maybe being part of that August ninth meeting as well, having some more discussions on that. Future planning, the budget supplements, we, we did a supplement for the remaining South Highway seventy-seven bridges, and as well as Signei Bridge. If you recall, that money for Signei had been assigned for a number of years, we actually moved that into the budget, so as we start now incurring expenses, hoping to get that project underway here yet this year, we can start paying for that, and then we had also, last year in twenty, had budgeted for the South Highway seventy-seven bridges, we took some of that fund balance, that rolled into fund balance that year and last year, and moved it back into the budget to finish out the remaining expenses for those bridges south. Going through, not a whole lot else, has, has changed on the work plan. Under the interchange project, we did move, as part of that budget supplement, we moved two million from general fund to the road and bridge fund to start paying for some of those expenses that we're now starting to see. Under self-evaluation, I did submit the 2020 year in review back, I believe that was maybe back in March or April. With drainage, we did approve the feasibility study, $6,000 with banner to move that, continue to move that along. Midary Monument, um, we did, there was the dedicate, rededication that was held just, uh, this past weekend. Samara Avenue, again, working through contract negotiations for the engineering services along with the city of Volga. That's all I had unless you had anything to add to our work plan. Okay, so that was just sort of a, kind of just a informational for only, no action needed on that.
Thank you. Item K, discussion on housing and redevelopment ordinance.
You recall just earlier this year, we updated, um, we updated this ordinance. And then, um, Mike Holzhouser retired and now our ex officio member doesn't make sense in our ordinance. Because we have it listed as the human services director, which was Mike's position. We no longer have that position. So we need to, I need to, just kind of looking at direction from the board on who you want that ex officio of person to be. Mike also took on that, kind of that responsibility of being the, um, the county employee liaison to that board who helped make sure agendas were getting posted correctly and that information was getting out. So do you see that now being Dan as, as the welfare is now in his department? Or Dan could maybe appoint someone as an ex officio to that commission? Or what are your thoughts? Just kind of looking for some direction because this ordinance will then again, now again, need to be updated.
Ben, do you know if Dan has any preference on this?
I don't know the answer to that. Um, and I don't want to speak for him, uh, on that issue because I, you know, I just haven't.
Myself, I would suggest that we put in that the Brookings County State's Attorney or his, or someone appointed by him. And then it, it probably should be the welfare person, but that should be Dan's choice, I think.
I would agree.
We could put, or the state's attorney or their designated appointee.
Yep.
Language like that. The other thing to note that I think Commissioner Krogman had mentioned, uh, Jason Mooseburger, who's been a longtime member of the Housing and Redevelopment Commission, had chaired that board for a number of years. Took a job in Minnesota and is moving unfortunately, so we're losing him on that board. Um, so we are advertising for that open position right now currently. So that is, I think, probably what you had seen probably the end of last week is that. So we will be looking to fill that spot. He is going to be at the meeting this week yet. That will be his last meeting, so it will be. And I know, um, he's kind of trying to tie up some loose ends on things that he did, uh, for that board before he, before he leaves as well, so. That is that unless you had any other questions, but if not, I could move right into my report.
Item number.
So I do have the general fund surplus cash analysis information. We're just a little bit below on that 10-year average. We're at 32%. The 10-year average is 36%. So we'll just kind of keep an eye on that. You know, that kind of trends downward until we get to October when second half, half taxes come in and then it jumps back up again. Um, the annual senior companions recognition event is Friday, August 6th at 10:30. That's up at the Elks Lodge in Watertown. I don't know if any of you would plan to attend that event. I am, need to RSVP for you if you do plan to attend that. Can any of you go to that? Friday, August 6th at 10:30. No, no.
Maybe.
I think they need to know by, looks like July 30th for sure, so. We also did receive, um, kind of a, a late, uh, request for a non-mandated from Dakota Abilities. They didn't get their application in on time or didn't submit an application through a non-mandated process, but it's there in your packet if you want to take a look at that. Um, basically what the request is for is for $2,160 when I did that math. Couple other things, uh, we kind of alluded to it earlier. We do have the August 9th, Monday, August 9th, we do have that township meeting. And as I had noted before, um, I don't know who plans, if all of you plan to attend that event. Um, or if just a couple of you plan to attend that event. We are, um, doing food, so I would need to know if you plan to attend for, for food essentially. I need to know by the end of this month, I'll be sending in information if you plan, plan to go to that. That's at, um, 5:30 is when we're starting that out at the BCOAC on Monday, August 9th. I think at the next, I, the next meeting still is before that township meeting. Because I, as I had mentioned, we did receive an application from a township, um, on our culvert program. And as I had mentioned, we didn't have anything current out there really for, for townships, but they submitted using a previous application, so I don't know. Brian, did you have any contact from any of the townships on this that, to go look at this? So, you know, it, it wasn't following the exact process that we had laid out because we usually had Brian go take a look at it and then, um, get their information and approve this. And then when it's done, Brian goes back out and takes a look at it. So some things weren't followed exactly, but, um, I will, um, I think maybe after that August 9th meeting, you know, hear from township, see what they want to say, or I could bring this forward on the next commission agenda and you can take a look at that. I could share it with Brian in the meantime and maybe he'd have a chance to go take a look at it. To give us his, his thoughts on that. I, you know, do you want to see that application before you?
Yeah.
Once he, once he gets a chance to take a look at it, I think that helps. Just to confirm though, the, we, at the last meeting, we had talked about trying to get the township meeting on July 26th. And it has been permanently moved to August 9th based on RSVP situations?
Yes, um, the BCOAC was booked on that night, so we couldn't get it.
Um, is there a possibility of putting a ad in the yellow paper or even a radio ad for these, for this meeting? We did invitations, uh, but response has been not that great yet.
It's pretty, Ben, yeah.
Encourage all the townships to attend.
We sure can do something for town, uh, townships. I would, um, I, I, I need a head count for, for meal planning is my issue, is with my problem with that. So if we put that out there for everybody, I don't know.
I mean, you could still, in that radio ad, if you're going to do something like that, still require them to call the commission office for RSVP.
I guess could we send out a reminder notice in the next, just a reminder, we haven't heard much. We need to know by this date for account for meal to the letters that were sent out to all the.
Yeah, I can do that. Can get that out here in the next couple of days. Yeah, I mean, I, I just need to know by the end of the month. So we have a little over, you know, about a week and a half yet. So I think maybe we can try to get those out. Okay.
I'll call you.
Okay. And then you yourselves too, let me know if you plan to attend that.
I will.
All of you will be there. Okay, that's, that's very, makes that very easy for me.
I have talked, I have talked with, uh, Greg Vowes from South Dakota LTAP and he agreed he would present some information at the meeting also, so.
You know, and it, and it might be if it's not a hassle, if he sent out by email to all of us a list of which townships we have represented. Maybe we personally could reach out to those townships where we know somebody that we haven't heard from.
Sure, yeah. I can send out, you know, those that have RSVP, then I can send out, we have a full, uh, township officer list that I could send out to everybody. Um, one more RSVP. I did hand out this morning, the quarterly meeting of your Sioux Valley Commissioners Association. That's going to be on Wednesday, August 18th. It is in Spink County, which is in Redfield, so it is a bit of a commitment this time to get there because it's about a two-hour drive, but I do need to RSVP, um, for those who plan to attend. So if any of you know for sure that you, um, are going or aren't going.
I, I will not.
Okay.
I'm on vacation that week.
Redfield.
I'll also miss the commission meeting that 17.
Okay. There is the Zoom, oh, there's the Zoom link as well. You do plan on going? Okay.
I'd like the Zoom link.
Yeah, it's on the agenda. I handed out to you. Then I can maybe forward, forward that to you so you could easily just have that link. Can't go. Mike, okay. Okay. Something that sort of fell through the cracks, uh, a lot of that was due to COVID last year. There was some discussion held about having a strategic planning retreat, like a day long where you guys go through that, our strategic plan. Is that something that you're still interested in doing? We'd kind of talked about it and then COVID hit and it's, it got pushed way back to the back burner and, and I had it pop up again in, as a reminder. That's something you're still interested in doing is going through a, a, a day-long or a half-day-long retreat to take a look at that strategic plan more in depth?
I think that makes sense. We've had enough conversations in recent months about staffing and future capital projects and all that, that I think it makes sense to just spend some time to focus on priorities.
I could send out a poll with some dates, probably a little later into August, September, maybe even, um, to.
Not, no more in August.
No more in August? Okay, so September, October? Okay, a ways out anyway. And then the only, uh, the last thing that I had were just some upcoming dates that you can see kind of in front of you. Uh, that was part of the agenda, part of my staff report coming up. Some things to note on there, just some highlights, August 31st, Tuesday, August 31st. I don't have exact details and times, but I, I, I think I've told you kind of to plan for the whole day. Have like a 8:30, 9 o'clock start, um, going to about 4 o'clock for the conservation district tour. Um, I'm working with John Finnegan on getting all of that lined up. Um, something new, September 2nd, there is a chamber legislative luncheon with John Thune. Um, as that gets a little bit closer, I'm sure you'll see some information coming out and some RSVP information from the chamber on that.
In person, not Zoom.
Yeah. And then later in September, First District is having their open house. And again, they've been at their new location for a while and again, COVID hit and they, they weren't able to officially have their kind of open house and ribbon cutting event at their new location up in Watertown. Um, did get some information on that. It's Thursday, September 23rd. You can see their ribbon cutting and open houses kind of during the midday, 11 to 1. And then they'll have their annual picnic that they always have. And instead of having it, um, I think out at Memorial Park where they usually have it in Watertown, I think it's going to be right there at their new, at their new location in Watertown. Um, the address is noted there, social hour at 5, picnic at 6, so that's all I have.
We just got an email for the conservation tour. Tuesday, August 31st, begin at 10 a.m., conclude by 3.
Great.
Transportation, tending, complimentary meal. It says the depart, meet at the Brookings Conservation District Building on 42nd Street. 10 a.m. Then they got an agenda's attached.
Great, I'll get that. I'll, um, I'll take a look at that too and make sure that gets updated.
And then another email came from CDI. I don't know if we've registered.
Um, yes, I did register your team already, so.
Alright.
Anything else? State's Attorney's Office report.
Uh, attending, um, an annual conference for the National District Attorneys Association. It's in Virginia. And, uh, he's been there, I think since Monday. I think he flies back tomorrow. I spoke with him last evening and he's going to have maybe some, uh, some more things to say about it next time when he comes back. But in the meantime, I'm, I'm wearing a couple of different hats in the state's attorney's office. Uh, and I don't, I don't really have anything else to report, uh, at this time, but that's, that's why you see me instead of Dan.
Alright, thank you. Commissioner Pierce.
On, I did in a conference call with Bart from the jail and actions regarding the feasibility of, of making the jail be a co-location facility so that we'll be able to do more with juveniles there if we need to. And it looks like that's all going to fall into place. Maybe Marty has some backup on that. I don't know. But they, they just needed final word from their supervisor, but they thought, they thought it was looking like we were going to be able to make that go. And we went through the, um, the diagrams for, for the, uh, facility at one more time. And, and there probably will be a change order coming down as relates to in the old part of the building, how we're doing a couple of doors and you guys will hear more about that when you go to your meetings. But the big, the big deal thing that we probably need to talk about is on the juvenile stuff where it has to be out of sight, out of sound. We need some blinds and we, you can, and I called Angie and she was, she was, Naco, I had forgotten. She was there to talk about this a little bit. So we, we're trying to figure out some blinds that would not slow anything down on the cells where we would, if necessary, hold the juvenile. And that was the only, that and the two doors in the old part was the only thing that they saw on the, um, diagrams that were issues, so. Looking good. And that would be all that I have to report.
Commissioner Burley.
Alright, well, I was gone by 8th until last Tuesday at, uh, National Association of Counties meeting, Naco. Attended on the 9th, or the 8th, the CIO tech conference and summit. That was kind of an interesting five-hour summit that had a lot of information about a lot of things, including some cybersecurity and some other issues, technical issues with counties across the country. Just kind of a highlight of some of the seminars and meetings that I attended was justice and public safety. Uh, we talked a little bit about jails. We talked a little bit about public safety. We talked a little bit about, uh, diversion programs that we have in place and some others that we may want to consider in the cer, in the future. Uh, human services policy meeting, health policy, American Rescue Plan Act. Uh, I think we had all gone out there to expect a lot more information than what we actually got out of the conference because not a lot of people know at this point in time what, what's actually going to transpire. Uh, and we can have a, an hour-long discussion on that sometime when we want to. I'm sure Commissioner Burzman, I could fill you in on a lot of knowledge that you didn't want to know, that you don't know, that it's probably going to be accurate here in the short future. So, uh, one of the things I guess I found out was, uh, there's revenue recovery strategy, uh, lost revenue and beyond. And, and those are types of things that, uh, we'd have to go over with Laurie at some point in time, uh, the information we got. Uh, part of it requires, there's a revenue recovery formula that Naco has put out and it's online. And there's a lot of information out in Naco and we'll go over that with Laurie. But, uh, essentially it takes a three-year look at, at how you may have lost revenue during the COVID experience. And instead of an average, or instead of a, okay, our county lost 12.9% or. or grew by 12.9%, or only grew by 1%, I don't know what our county grows by every year, but they just struck a national average of 4.1%. So if your county grew less than that every year, you can use 4.1% as your baseline of lost revenue you should have got. It's, it's kind of a goofy formula. It's not an approved formula from the Treasury Department at this point, but the Treasury didn't object to it. Of course, the Treasury didn't write it, so they're not going to prove anything they didn't write, so. It looks pretty accurate, but Naco is really pretty much on top of a lot of questions and answers on the other recovery actors, like one of the speakers talked about, if you're going to look at the act, look at the last 20 pages, forget all the rest of it. Most of the information we need is going to be in the last 20 pages of that particular document. And obviously they're changing it and updating it, and we'll see those things as it comes down the pipe. One of the things I thought was interesting, that if your county had received less than $5 million, your reporting requirements will probably be annual rather than quarterly. If you're over $5 million, it'd be quarterly reports, so that was news to me, so it makes it a little bit easier. They talked a little bit about companies that would probably help you with these particular types of programs and reports. It seemed to be geared to larger counties with much more infrastructure and things than what we actually have. Our reporting requirements might be considerably less than what you would see for counties that have public services, roads, sewer water, that type of stuff, that we don't have the infrastructure involved with that. So it was interesting, brought me up to date on a lot of those things. Also had cybersecurity conversations, which I'll, I'll have with our security person here at some point in time. Really a big thing across the country is cybersecurity right now. There's a lot of bad actors out there and how we need to protect ourselves. And one of the things that I, I always had this aversion to putting things in the cloud, thinking the cloud is, you know, that's not a safe place to put anything because anybody can access it. Well, through two or three of the seminars, I was convinced that the cloud is the only safe place you could put things, if you're going to put things out there, is to, they should go to the cloud. So I know that we've had discussions about whether we do the cloud or not, and I'm somewhat convinced that that's probably the way we need to look to the future. Talked about children's and families and small businesses with the COVID relief that we can get through the American Rescue Plan Act. Behavioral health was a large one, a large discussion. It looks like an area that we can use funds for and over a three-year period. So we'll, we'll attack that issue and make sure that we, we spend money appropriately there. Talked about outdoor recreational challenges for counties. Our BCOAC is not necessarily outdoor, but it certainly is. It involves all kinds of outdoor activities. There may be some areas there for some lost revenue that we may be able to recover some, some fees, make some, make some changes. And general sessions covered a lot of different subject areas, I can't remember them all. We also talked about trends in, one of the seminars, in property assessment and housing markets, and we'll go over that. It's the dark store theory all across the country right now, sitting in all kinds of counties as far as tax assessments, when they close a large retail, we'll pick on Kmart. That was one of the programs they brought up when they shut down a Kmart, and then Kmart puts a restriction, you can't use it as a Kmart, or you can't use it as a, as a store, similar to what Kmart was, or lumberyard, similar to what a Menards was. So there's a deed restriction, what are you going to use it for? And so they want a reduction in taxes. Well, it was your choice to put the deed restriction in. And the one thing I guess I realized more than anything else is once you start taking those reevaluations on a large dark store, you know, our bill levies where it's at, everybody else, when you take that tax revenue away, gets to pay it. So it filters down to, to everybody else on the tax rolls to pay for reducing the taxes on a large box store that choose to close their store and sit on it and not sell it or not redevelop it. So that was an interesting session. So I, I go on and on, but anyway, it was a good meeting, I enjoyed it. I think I attended 18 to 20 different seminars and meetings during the week. I know Commissioner Boersma did, and Mr. Hill attended a lot of meetings too. We, we ran into each other every once in a while, but it was, it was a lot of meetings, a lot of, a lot of good information. So I appreciate it, the opportunity to go, and I think that it was well worth the, the effort and the time and the expense for all of us to probably attend those meetings. A lot of good information. That would conclude my report.
Mike, can I just ask a question? When you talked about growth and how it relates. Define the same way we define growth when we do our budget stuff?
No, actually, what it does is it takes all federal funds out. Anything that we received in federal funds, public health, safety, those types of things are out of it. Pretty much relies on tax revenues and other revenues you may have. But if it's licensing fees, those are out, anything like that, it's, it's very specific to calculate it. It doesn't look like it's too difficult to do, and I think I'll talk to Laurie about getting online and looking at it. Our difficulty with it is that it uses a three-year average, but you can do three years. This program is for three years, so you can go back a year, and then that covers this year, this year covers next year, and that one covers the last one, three years down the road, and 23 or 22. But you have to use the same basis for your calculations, and we're switching from accrual to cash basis. And that happened the first of January, so to try and make those comparisons from accrual to cash, it's going to take some work on our part, and we may need some assistance to do that. So looking at that part of it, yeah, that'll, that'll take some work.
Commissioner Groblin.
All right, mine's going to be a little. That's true, good point. All right, July 7th, attended the lead around table. That was workforce slash affordable housing discussion, and it was, it was very good. We had a lot of discussion on the different types of housings and availability and what type of housing out in the county, in the city, multi-housing, single family, all of that, good stuff. And, and, and I think the basis of it is this is not just going to be something that can be solved by the city of Brookings or Brookings County. It's going to have to be solved by a lot of different entities that are involved in housing. And so we're hoping that we can, we had that task force, that Affordable Housing Task Force that put together a document back in 2018. I encouraged, I think it was Jacob was there from the city, that the city maybe dust that off and start looking at things that they can do, and I'm hoping us as a county can look at the things that we can do on our zoning regs that would take into effect an opportunity to have some rural residential opportunities out there. You know, in a, in a, in a controlled manner, I guess. And so that was a good conversation, and it kind of happened all through the last couple of weeks. I had two different constituents reach out to me about that. One I met with yesterday that was talking about agrihood, opportunity to be out in the county, producing egg, vegetables all in the community, and seen a lot of traction on that. Our neighbors have them already, Minnesota, Nebraska, all have these. And, and this, this gentleman has the opportunity to maybe start something, has control of some land, quite a bit of land, it's fairly close to town. This would be in the joint jurisdiction, so we don't have complete control over it. But I also want to start working outside the joint jurisdiction of potential housing out there if there's, if there's a way to get that done. But I think it's something us as a board need to take a look at, and if we have that work-study potential, that this discussion needs to happen along with the zoning board. I met, Bob put me on the agenda for one of the zoning meetings back in, I think it was May, and the zoning board wanted me to come back with information. I haven't had the chance to compile that yet, but just so you guys know, I want to start having that conversation with our zoning board and with you guys about our part in working with workforce housing or affordable housing, and see what we can do as, as a commission to move forward to that, get the city on board, get other cities, other towns in our county on board, because they provide an important affordable housing aspect to our county. And so it was a good conversation there, and you know, we're going to keep moving that forward, and I will try to keep that going, so. On the 14th, I was hoping to make the beta new member orientation, but work got in the way there. But Brenda put on a new member orientation for a couple of new members that we have to understand the beta process and the federal funds and everything that goes involved with that. I was hoping to get there. Now she said that she would put this on at any time, so my thought to you guys as commissioners is if you wanted to have a time where she could present of how the fund, how those federal funds work and ridership and all that kind of stuff, she'd be happy to do kind of an orientation. So we can discuss that in a workforce thing if we want to try to do something like that. Also on the 15th, I thought I was going to be. On the 15th, we had Growth Partnership, and they got approval to start a new building right next door to, to the building that's going there, so that's really exciting. Collaboration with SDSU, and it's going to be a really nice building. They're starting to work on it here, they're going to start breaking ground, and it's been a long time coming, and I can get some more information for you guys on that. But I was, I had to leave early after the vote, so I can get some more information to get to you guys. And that's about it, so.
Commissioner Boersma.
The 13th, I was also out at the Naco Conference in DC. I won't go in as much detail as Commissioner Bartley, but the sessions that I was interested in and spent a lot of time and energy on were specifically related to economic development, small business recovery efforts, and mental and behavioral health, and how American Rescue Plan funds can be used in those particular areas. And the, the big takeaway, I think, for, for all of us is that if there are programs that are not necessarily covered in the current rules, on behalf of counties, Naco is putting together lists of questions and clarifications and suggestions back and forth to Treasury. So they're having regular meetings with folks at Treasury so that counties get to influence what programs may or may not end up being covered. So if there are things that we are very insistent on needing to be included, we should provide those comments back through Naco so that Treasury gets further clarification on what it is that would actually help counties. So that's kind of the big takeaway that I've, I've got for everybody on that one. And then July 14th was at the ICAP kind of special session to look at some staffing stuff that we're working through. And then the 15th, BEDC's Strategic Planning Retreat Task Force meeting, so that's what I got.
Okay, thank you. On the 15th. Starting to go into each room, like the kitchen, installing hoods, a lot of different stuff going on. It's starting to take shape pretty good. On the 18th, I went down to the Midary Monument rededication. A lot of history was reviewed, brought forward. It was well-attended, I guess, there was probably about 20 people there. Provided you with some buttons that they had. I do have a. New plaque was installed out there commemorating the rededication. They also, in the future here, there's two large plaques along the highway that have been there for many years. And I know one time the Highway Department had refurbished them to get them to kind of stand a little straighter. But that's kind of their next project is to rehab those two signs that are out there. They're very appreciative that I showed up, and I, I thank them for basically preserving part of the history of Brookings, and it's, a lot of people probably do not know that the city of Brookings was established down there, and actually the buildings were all moved. And, and it's, it was very interesting. There was the person that actually been mowing that for well over 20, 20 years, Brad Nelson. He, he had a little history there too, so it was, it was a great event. That's all I have, this is, this is a picture of the plaque that is now in place down there also. Moving on to. In accordance with South Dakota codified law 1-25-2, parentheses 6, security information. Do I have a motion to enter?
Removed.
Second.
Have a motion second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carried.